Las Vegas and welcome to Face the Tribune with the legendary Rolando Maras. And once again, if you have nothing to fear, nothing to hide, if you're a politician and you don't mind coming in, you can sit in the hot seat and face the Tribune. With that, Rolando, how you doing today?
I like that sitting in the hot seat.
That's right.
Hello, Las Vegas. And I'm gonna try to do something different today. If it looks good, if I like it, and if I get the approval from the producer, maybe I'll do. But you ever hear, did you ever listen to Judge Jeanine? She have an opening statement. I'm gonna make it very short for him. Man, we have a real president. It is completely unheard. Then we have a president, then...
Is it time?
Keep... If we have a president, then do what he promise. A president that fulfill all his promises during the campaign. That is unheard from anybody, especially from the last president. Like I wrote this week in the Tribune. He promised those illegals, I don't care what they call themselves. I call them illegal because anybody that do something against the law is illegal. You know, even if it's crossing the street. And he promised them to solve their problem twice in eight years. And they never hear nothing. And they still following him like a dummies. Because they think then if something is gonna happen. And I tell you, the only thing I can see Barack Obama did for those people is to get them in trouble. Because now they are infatuated, they think they are in control. And they have to realize that we have a president now that is in control. And they not gonna allow, he's not gonna allow these people to come here against the law, against all the rules and regulations and all the costs of immigration and naturalization, and be doing, demanding anything. People don't have the right to demand, they have right to ask. But not demanding, especially when you are in the wrong. I mean, when I get a call from somebody, then I'm in the wrong, I answer the phone call right away. Why? Because it is my fault that they have to call me. Call them a bill collector or somebody that is angry for something that I write, whatever. If I think they in the right, I will face them sooner than later. That's the way I feel there, it should be. Anybody that I owe money to, and it's not that many people, but I have some. Like every businessman, we have bills that we are behind. And when they call, and if they don't call me because they trust me, I call them to see how they doing and everything else. I don't hide from anybody. I don't lie when people hide from me. So I don't do that to anybody else. And with that said, I can say, good morning, Las Vegas, good afternoon, the world. And thank you, Chris, for being here today. And let's go with our regular program. While we waiting for City Councilman Bob Beer to get here. If he gonna get here, he probably forgot about me, you know. And after all, I'm just a poor little Cuban refugee. Then, oh, maybe his campaign manager didn't allow him to come. You know how much she love me. Oh, she hate my drugs. And she hate me because I don't take garbage from her, that's why. I don't believe that she's doing the right thing for the client that she have. And I speak up, that's why.
That's right.
So, in the meantime, what else is new with you?
Oh, you're just right, man. It's just, it feels so different to have Donald Trump as president. It feels so different. Every day you wake up, it's just, it's like you're in a different country or in the country that it's supposed to be. You know, it's just, it was like the last eight years was the twilight zone under Barack Obama. We apologized all over the world. We were the laughing stock all over the world. And man, he is putting everybody on notice, China, everybody, everybody's putting on notice, man. Whoa. This is... Why did you do that? I was saying. Our producer, CNN, people don't know her strength, but she just picked up a TV by herself.
She pick a TV all by herself with one hand. She crap it like that. I mean, what would she do to you if she does that?
I think spirit gets it out.
But you know, that's the way your life is. Twenty million dollars a year give you enough energy to carry a TV. You know, I can't believe that. You know, so...
She just picked it up like it was a feather.
Like it was a feather, yes. Anyway...
But yeah, it just, it feels different.
And let me tell you, let me tell you, I don't know, I have to admit, I'm not having proof to that. But I don't see the Barack Obama administration having a brief, a daily briefing on TV every day. They might have it on CNN or any of those social news stations. But Fox News is making now, the, Fox News is is running the brief, the brief, the morning brief, the daily morning brief. God, it's called, Rolando. Every day now. And if it would have been something else, I would be mad because it's in the middle of outnumbered.
Yes.
You know, it's in the middle of outnumbered. But I, I knew she was gonna get a hernia sometime, you know. And if it would have been somebody, some other show, I don't mind. But I love that outnumbering scene. I know, you know, I tell you why. I love intelligent, beautiful woman.
We have two here. We have two right here.
Yeah, I know, I know we got two in here. We got two and a half here, you know, but...
My sister, she wants to let you know, because I saw stuff. At Radio Tribune, now my sister Kayla just had a social media here. And Rolando doesn't know this, but she's already working on her contract with you.
How long is twenty minutes?
She said, no, she said if she gets twenty, what does she work?
I don't speak English, I'm sorry. No, but if she going vacation, we just talk about the twenty minutes, you know. There he is, I know.
He says, come to you.
I said, right here, no.
He just sit right here.
I knew he was coming.
Got a guest coming?
I knew he wasn't gonna let me. I just wanted to know, Mr. Bob Beer, let's give him a grand welcome. I'd like to know, Bob, who do you piss so bad that you have to have two people running against you? Who do you piss? You must have pissed the...
Three.
Oh, you got three now?
Another one just filed, yeah.
Really? Who is it?
Um, her name is...
Oh, well, you don't need to call her name.
But you know what, Rolando? This is the funnest job I've ever had, and I can't blame anybody who wants it.
Well, we gotta make sure that you, because this is your last term, right?
No, I would have two more if the voters wanna bring me down.
This one and another one. Yeah, we need to have you there. You doing a fantastic job, and I don't hide to say it. And you know me, Bob, I'm not a hypocrite. If I didn't think you was doing it, you know, I could never, never come into this microphone and say the same thing about Ricky Barlow. But or your friend, Tarcanian, you know, I don't believe, I'm not that kind of person. I can like you as a person, but if you're not doing a good job, I keep my mouth shut. You know, you doing a good job for the people.
I, I got a report this week. You remember the MLS soccer stadium?
Yeah.
And the city was gonna put fifty million dollars cash and a bunch of other stuff in there and give it to them.
Yeah, I remember, you did a job about that.
The question would be, what happened to that money? What happened to that money? And I got the answer.
Really?
Yeah.
Can you...
Four new parks right here in downtown.
Can you do that on the air?
Yeah, I just did. There's a, we're only halfway through, so we borrowed the... To back up, where does this money come from? This money represents a fee that the city has paid by the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authority. Because it's city people who go collect room tax from hotel rooms inside city limits. And so that, that revenue stream is millions of dollars a year, about three of them.
Really?
And so when you have a cash flow like that, you can go out into the bonding market and say, "We'd like to borrow against this money. This money is how we're gonna pay you back, so you give us some money now." And the idea was that we'd be able to raise fifty million dollars with that borrow. Well, we ended up doing that, although we're only halfway through the program. And we're instead of the MLS stadium, putting it into parks, almost all of which are here in the downtown corridor. So it's, it's kinda heartwarming to be able to look back and say, I had something to do with that.
Yeah.
That's cool.
And congratulations, I'm glad to hear that. And we need to make a big splash on that.
It's not just dogging the budget either, you know. This last year in 2016, we had a situation where county and city wasn't getting along very well. And they basically...
Do they do now?
Well, as a matter of fact, in a formal way, yes, they do. Because, I mean, this started out because we have an agreement where a city unit is gonna go over city limits to pick, to help someone in the county if they're the closest unit, and vice versa. So we had county fire units coming, or rescue units coming into the city to help city, if they're the closest unit.
Oh, wow, that makes sense, yeah.
We've had that in place for a long time. But then, we've got a guy that accounts for it, right? And he, at the end of every quarter, says, okay, there have been more trips by the city than the county, so the county owes the city money. Or maybe the next quarter, it's vice versa. Well, this guy retired last year from the county. He came over to the city and he spent a lot of...
That wasn't what you'd watch it in.
Oh, no. He said, you know, I told my boss ten years ago that we weren't counting the trips that city units make into the county islands in the northwest primarily, in that equity. And if you count that in, it's tipped toward the city big time. And they told me to sit down and shut up.
Oh, wow.
And but now I'm retired. So now I'm come over here to tell you how it works. And so the city hired an expert to come in and go behind him and redo his numbers, and they agreed. And then hired the same expert to go over and get county staff to agree, and they agreed.
Can you have him contact me?
It gets better. The city set the county a bill for three million buys, capped by the statute of limitations, right? So instead of pulling out their checkbook, the county ordered an internal audit of their election department and determined that they were not receding back all the money they were spending in the course of conducting these off-cycle elections for the cities. And so the city of Las Vegas bill would go up ten times for the 2017 and all subsequent elections. And then they had more arguments about whether Cashman Field was the right place for the Raiders or not. And then the county started asking city sewer workers to get a permit to go work on sewer infrastructure located in county islands, which just adds days and dollars to the cost of providing city services. So it got pretty bad there, and then we had Marilyn Kretpatrick and Steve Ross running against each other. Well, I go back as a freshman in the legislature with Marilyn Kretpatrick.
Yeah.
And Larry Brown and I go back to before either one of us were elected to anything. So I went over to the county building and sat down with those guys and said, "Look, if we get the mayor and city manager over here for one more round of talks, can we try to work through this? Because this is just not benefiting any of our citizens." They, everyone agreed, and we worked through it. There was a lot of distrust. We broke the large agenda into three pieces and said, okay, can...
They all agree or somebody don't?
More in principle. And so we said, all right, county, you're gonna pass the first third on Tuesday, and then the city will follow up and do it on Wednesday. And then a month later, we'll do the second third, and the city will follow up the next day. And then after the third month, we'll do the final third, and we'll be in agreement. And I think it took us five months instead of three. But we got all three pieces that passed, and now there is literally peace in the valley. We're still suspicious of one another a little bit here and there, but our staffs are working together. And that's the most important part, because that is what has the potential for, I think, saving taxpayers, both in the city and the county, tens of millions of dollars in just wasted effort, wasted time and money over the next ten years. So I feel pretty good about that accomplishment. And yeah, so I'm running for reelection. I think I do good things in this job. I love the job, it's the funnest job I've ever had. And so, yeah, I'm running for reelection.
Good.
And are you getting paid for having fun?
And I'm getting livable wages, they say. We pay our city councilmen fairly well. Yeah, so this is all I need.
Let me ask you something, let me ask you. I don't wanna get into that because I wasn't prepared. But do you think you guys are getting paid fairly?
Well, uh...
You don't think that the people...
I'll tell you, yup. Some, some of us do this more than forty hours a week. And some of us, some of us do this twenty hours a week, and we all get paid the same. It's kind of...
But don't you think you guys should be full-time city councilmen?
I am a full-time city councilman.
Well, you are. But technically, by the law, you're not...
At the end of the day, any elected office, the accountability isn't your boss. The accountability is the hundred thousand bosses who voted in your election and asked you to represent them, in our case, down in City Hall. And so...
That makes sense.
You know, that is what the accountability is, and that's just the nature of things. And I take it as one of the pluses and minuses of our form of representative government. Sometimes we pick well, sometimes not so well. But in the end, we diffuse individual authority amongst a board or a council, so no one person can take us in a rogue direction. And generally, I think we arrive at relative, I mean, you understand that the core question that often ignites, for example, presidential political arguments that we've just been through for the last year, is what is the proper size and scope of government? How big should government be? What should it do? What shouldn't it do? And that's not part of the city council's job. The state legislature sets that for us. In a lot of places, city councils will sit down and decide how much they need to spend next year, and then divide by the assessed value, and voila, your tax rate pops out for your property tax, and it varies up and down depending on government's spending needs or desires, I guess we could say, or so. Here, that's not true. The legislature sets the tax rate, and the council's job is to make sure that we waste as little of that as possible in the course of getting our assigned jobs done, which is primarily public safety provision, fire, police, providing roads and sidewalks and a few parks. And a few other things. You'd really miss our sewer service if it run away.
Why?
You would start to smell bad.
Why? How can we put some, how can we put some perfume in there so it starts smelling good?
You take it for granted when you push the handle down on the privy that everything's gonna go away.
Oh, I know, no.
Let me tell you, I told that to, what was the name of that lady? Boss McDonald, I forgot her first name.
Lynette.
Yeah.
Lynette, Bob.
Oh, Lynette, yeah, that's right. I thought she was begging to get appointed to the city council. That was before your time, right?
It was.
Yeah. She was begging to everybody, you know, she sound like Erin... I forgot her name. Oh, man, this is bad today. Anyway, she got elected, she got appointed, and she went to work for the board director of the station casino. The lady started criticizing her and pointing out a lot of things. And she said, she said to me one day, "I cannot live with the salary of a city council." I said, "Lynette, you knew what the salary was, and you begged Michael McDonald, and you begged Gary Rees, and you begged everybody to give you the job. You knew what the salary was, you didn't have to take the job. If you cannot live with more than a thousand dollars a week, you're doing something wrong."
I'm not complaining.
Because what is a sixty nine, what is a sixty nine there?
Somewhere around there, but then you have to add on benefits, you know, we're city council...
No, but the salary is sixty nine, so...
But the benefits are phenomenal as well. It's better benefits than the private sector by far.
Really? Well, yeah, I hear that in the radio today. I hear ten more talking about how much a ganny to make in the private sector or how much a ganny to make in the government sector, you know. And I tell you, I think it's a triple a ganny to. So now you imagine, well, look at the metro. How many of those police officers make three hundred thousand dollars a year, and the sheriff doesn't make it?
A few, but not many. Look, look, we have a system in Nevada that goes back to when the mob was here.
Who? We have mob in here?
Long ago, before the MBAs.
Before I was born, right?
And, and the... It's kind of by design. It's kind of by design. It really is. Now, I think we get paid more now than we did back when Lynette was serving on the city council.
Oh, really?
I think, I believe that we do, I haven't researched it. But yeah, you're right, I knew what the salary was going in, and I was at a point in my life where I could do that. And, and I'm very fortunate to be able to do this full-time.
That's true, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that, you know. I, I believe that people that are going to be public servants, they should realize that that's what they are, a public servant. If you cannot handle it, for whatever reason, the hours, because you don't work eight hours a day. I'm sure, I seen you working after five o'clock, you know. And I have to say that, I seen Scarrow's Antonis also working different hours than anybody else. And sometimes when he's not working himself, he got some of his people doing...
We, for the most part, take this job very, very seriously, all seven of us. We all probably have some different ideas.
I happen to disagree with you on that.
We probably have some different ideas about the best way to achieve as efficient an operation as possible. And we certainly have occasionally different ideas about what's the best way to build downtown here and there. And you know, we have some disagreements.
And you have a different idea who's brought the kids before the others, right? And you know, so, and yeah, it's understandable, you're all humans.
Rolando.
Did you go to a commercial or anything like that? Hey, so you're being sponsored by Mail by Renee. For ten dollars a month, you can come downtown and you can get a wonderful, wonderful downtown Las Vegas address. Just come in and see CNN, Mail by Renee, ten dollars a month. That's 716 South 10th Street, right off the corner of 10th and Charleston. And the big grand opening next week. They will also have U-Haul trucks available to be rented out and be dropped off. Once again, come in at CCM, and you can get you a mailbox. And also, we will have U-Haul trucks available, the number there is 702-626-0716. Mail by Renee, that's on the corner of 10th and Charleston, 716 South 10th Street. And we are proud, sponsor of Face the Tribune, and also Chris Garcia, the conservative American.
We are talking to Bob Beer, the city council in World Four, right?
Two.
Two, World Two, I'm sorry.
World Two.
I'm sorry. And I, let me ask you, is there any way that the city council can rearrange the idea of how people get business licenses? You know, I hear this, Bob, every single day. People complaining how difficult and how expensive it's become to get a business license.
Yeah, well, the state legislature has authorized the city to rely on business licensing as a revenue generator that's actually in state law.
Right.
And since the recession, it took a few years for the dropping revenue to flatten, but it has not bounced right back to where it was before. And so increasingly, the city's been looking to business licensing increases and things to bolster its revenue. Some of them make sense, some of them frankly don't. We've got, one example is that we wanna create a new business license, never been created before, for people who are, who own rental property. So I stopped to think about that. And so we already have a business license for the real estate agent who has to actually lease that rental property. And rental property is, the nature of it is that you may or may not have revenue coming in. The IRS treats, the IRS treats revenue from rentals considerably differently than, than other types of income. So we're still working through that. We don't want, certainly, I think everyone agrees with me, we don't wanna hurt somebody who's got a house and they wanna rent a room in their house. That doesn't make a lot of sense. But on the other hand, my, my city council looks over at the World Market Center, and my, and my licensing staff looks over at the World Market Center and sees all that activity and just wants a piece. So that's the road we travel, and I make arguments, hopefully that pushes toward moderation and fiscal savings.
But like, for example, and I have discussed this with Mayor Goodman, boss of Mayor Goodman, and it bothers me, I don't know if that was before your time or after your time, but people in the city, they need to have a state license. That came out of Ross Miller.
Legislative mandate, yeah.
That was Ross Miller trying to be funny. And the only time you businesses need a state license is for privileged license, like legal bail bondments, and...
I think the legislature voted different.
Yeah, I know, so how can we, but you don't have to follow all the legislations, right?
Uh, pretty much. We take an open office, we're gonna implement the law, and...
And I was, I'm exempt, so I don't have to. I'm not bitching about me, or I'm not complaining about me, but I hear people come and talk.
You know, over here in the...
Now four hundred dollars, like it or not.
I know, and, and more licenses are being required at all times.
But any counties go that way?
The county is getting that way. Their licensing people talk to our licensing people, and they work together. So for example, this idea of implementing the first ever business license for owning property, even though you pay property tax every year already, that is one that has been discussed, my understanding is, on the staffs of the county and the city.
And this is being discussed in the city council only?
No, only internally, it's a staff level discussion.
So the people, the audience, the people don't have any say so on that?
In order to be implemented, there would have to be a city council hearing and a vote, and that would be the time when we would ask for a public comment. So you have to be paying attention to it.
Well, I hate to say that, Bob, but I don't have too much space on the city council comments. I, I don't, or public comments or whatever you call that. I got the feeling that when those public comments come, you guys already have your mind made. And if I'm wrong, correct me.
Um, you're not entirely wrong, but you're not entirely right. I think that it does and can make a difference at the moment of the hearing. However, the city does attempt to go find comments prior to the council meeting. They have workshops, and they solicit for comments being submitted as written comments. And those do all go into the creation of regular... Well, I'll give you an example. At the Southern Nevada Health District, they regulate swimming pools, commercial swimming pools. And we've got a phenomenon here in Las Vegas called party pools. I, I haven't done this myself, but I guess you wear your street clothes and go have a cocktail party in the shallow end of the pool. And lots of people from out of town come here and think that's a really good time.
Well, people from downtown...
But it turns out, there's a federal regulation against wearing clothes into a public pool, so... So, now, the health district staff has initiated a process that they hope will culminate in, in regulations. So, they sent out notices to all the swimming pool operators and said, we're thinking about changing the regulations, here's what we're thinking about changing to, please send us your comments. And the comments came back and the proposed regulation was significantly modified based on those comments.
Yeah, I'm glad that that happened, because I tell you, I believe that most people that come to Las Vegas, they come here to do what they don't dare do in their own hometowns. You know, they come over here, they want to cheat on their wife, they want to have energy, they want to do a lot of things. Then uh, they will know, because they live a funny life over there. And uh, I believe that it's a little bit of disrespect for the people that live here and the, for the, for the city itself, or for the area itself. I know it's a county and it's a city and everything else.
Yeah, it's a teeter totter, uh, let's not forget that um, hundreds of thousands of Las Vegans bring their paycheck home from.
Yeah, definitely, definitely, but uh, I think.
So, if they want to get in the pool, in the shallow end of the pool and have a cocktail party in street clothes.
Aren't they very modest? They don't want to take their clothes off, they go in the pool with their clothes on.
I work from fat, I'm not taking my clothes off. I'm coming in just like this.
No.
We got a little report, I know, I, I know we, we have a special guest on today, but Fox News reported an over two hundred and fifty thousand dollar job increase in general.
Wow, so, that's just from people, that's just from people being competent.
Yes.
Absolutely, Bob.
But you know the Trump guy, don't you?
Um, you know, I, I'm, I'll tell you, Orlando, I believe that Washington probably can't be saved. It's not because of the direction President Obama took us or because of the direction that President Trump will take us. It's because Congress is addicted to writing checks to their friends back home in excess of what they take in. Uh, you know, there's a parking, uh, you'd see hall parking garage over there on Main Street. You go all the way to the back, over the railroad tracks now, there's a one and a half million dollar pedestrian bridge that goes over to Symphony Park. It was opened about four years ago and has probably had about forty people use it. Uh, it was supposed to be for overflow parking.
Well, they people carry you.
Yeah, I get it, uh, and that was a case where one of our federal representatives uh, came along and said, hey, I've got a check for a million and a half bucks. Got any projects? That's the wrong way to go about government, government needs to be gone around the other way. Oh, we have a need, what is it? Okay, let's find funding for the need. Not, here's some funding, can you find something to do with it? That's broken, and that's the problem with Washington, and it wouldn't, technically it would be bad, but it wouldn't be nearly as problematic if they were actually collecting that much in taxes that they're handing out. But for seventy-five years, they just keep spending more than they take in. Year after year after year after year, I'm sure it's very petty stuff if you're the congressman or the senator, but that's not good for America, every nation that has done that and an effort to pacify its citizens has fallen.
Well, it's like, I always said, then uh, and I'm not gonna ask you for any response or die, you're running for reelection, so I don't want to put you in any hot seat, because not only I believe that you are a good city council, I believe you are loyal to the people in the city of Las Vegas, but you also are a great guy and you are, I consider you myself a friend. I told, I don't want to put you in any spot.
This must be a heck of a question.
But I tell you.
He says this when you're not here, he writes about you all the time, he does.
I do believe, I believe that you're doing the right thing, and I believe, and you see, I did this opening statement and uh, and now I forgot what my question was.
That's not always happens to me. That's not always happens to me.
That's what happened when you get it all, that's what happened when you get it all, and you have a limited language, speaking language abilities, you know, but uh, I believe then uh, the city can be a little bit more attractive to the businessmen, the people that live here, you know, we need to be, you know. I got the Mayor Goodman over here one day and I was complaining about the parking meters. And she said to me, very humble, very, not, that's the benefit, that's the price you have to pay for living in Las Vegas. Well, I've been here longer than she has.
Well, it's pretty much optional, you don't have to go downtown.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I've walked to downtown, so I don't have to worry about.
You know, there's, there is a fine line, there are a handful of locations generally very close to Fremont Street uh, that have businesses on them, a block or two off Fremont, and especially on a big party night, all the spots will be taken in front of their establishments and they want some mechanism to control that, so there's some parking left for their people too.
So, what, what benefit does to the business? If you go there, you put a money in the parking meter and then the meter expires, wait a minute, let me tell you.
If you can't park anywhere near that place, you won't even know that. And so, that is what drives that thought process on the part of some downtown merchants who see some benefit, sometimes.
How?
From paid parking.
If you put money in the parking meter and the parking meter expired, the downtown merchant is not gonna make any money, the city is gonna make some money.
So, the downtown merchant is usually a restaurant. And people usually stay there for ninety minutes and usually they pay for their parking and then they move off. The restaurant owners, some of them, think that if they didn't have that paid parking there with the time limit, then you'd simply fill those spots up immediately with the employees and the buskers on Fremont Street who would park all day, all eight hours in that spot in front of their business. That being said, now wait, that being said, on the other hand, the city has now gone to a twenty-four hour a day paid parking on a city-owned parking lot in front of Symphony Park, in front of the, the Smith Center. And I, I parked in it last night and I was one of twelve cars in about twelve hundred parking spots. It's hard to justify on the basis of a economic shortage and a rational system of rationing parking spots that that makes sense. That is the flip side, which is where the city does it, to make money. Yes, cities think about making money too. We like to think of them as purely altruistic, uh, but they're driven by economics just like radio stations and internet radio stations and uh, places where you can rent a mailbox and a U-Haul trailer.
I just thank you.
That's the, that's the question, our producer over here wanted to know, Bob, how do we go about putting those bike, those bikes now, um, in front of your business?
The, the new bicycle program is being managed by the Regional Transportation Commission and it is federally funded, uh, and uh, I don't know the answer to your question, which is, oh, I'd like some of those in my neighborhood. I don't know the answer, because I think they did their study and they solicited input like, like, like they do and most people are doing their lives and don't pay attention to your government soliciting input. And so, there's probably a lot of people that didn't get picked up on that fragment. Uh, so, I guess the right answer, uh, to the best of my knowledge, would be you call the Regional Transportation Commission and find out who is in charge of the rental bicycle program and.
It's the RTC, you have to talk to Angela Castro.
There you go.
And uh, I told you I was gonna do that, but uh, I'm glad that he said it, because uh, I believe that in this area, your place in particular is a perfect location for that. It's a perfect location, right across the street from you is a bicycle shop. Yes, so, that title, maybe they put a bicycle to fix up, they need to rent a bicycle. You know, I think it's a good idea, I'm gonna give people the ability to exercise a little bit.
And time will tell if they can pencil, that's the real big test, we don't know yet, this is a, a pilot program. But it's one of a number of different transportation alternatives that we're entertaining uh, for downtown. You know, we, we're looking at a uh, essentially a fixed route just operating in downtown, so run a figure eight.
They used to have one.
Yeah, they have in the past, so this is run a figure eight from the Clark County Government Center and the Outlet Mall and the World Market Center into the downtown areas, the Arts District, East Fremont, everything in between.
And the courthouse.
Um, and then we got the contract before the city council and it turned out that the contract was uh, really disadvantageous for the city. It would have allowed the bus company to set up four or five ad agencies and take fifteen, thirty percent commissions, reducing the amount of money that would be split with the city. And so.
Oh, how dare you do that, how dare?
We pointed that out at the meeting and it was a back, a back retreat pretty quick.
Yes.
Uh, we were approached, one of the things we're thinking about, I'd be curious what you guys think of this. Uh, this, this fixed route bus company wanted basically a million dollars. Uh, and uh, then they would split some portions of revenue with us, when there was some down the road, which they're gonna make from advertising. Well, Uber came along and said, tell you what, we'll provide not a fixed route in your downtown area, but unlimited point-to-point in your downtown area through our service. City will pay for it, all these rides are less than five bucks a piece. Uh, the drivers get paid and your citizens can go anywhere they want in downtown. We'll fix our app up so that it can tell where you are, and if you aren't inside the, the service area and your destination isn't inside the service area, you will not be given the option for the free ride. So, we're, we're talking about that, they're, they're talking.
How much Uber was gonna give, uh, the city?
Huh?
How much Uber was gonna give?
They weren't gonna give the city anything, uh, but then the other company merely said they were going to instruct a contract to, to uh, ensure that the city wouldn't get anything. They do want less than half the money as the other company want. So, we're kicking it around, it's got some upsides and some downsides.
Let me.
But what, what do you guys think? Would that be handy for downtown living to, to uh, have that Uber ride, point-to-point?
Well, if Uber can spare that much, that many cars, I believe it should be for official business, like going to the courthouse or going to City Hall. I don't think everybody that live in downtown should be calling.
It's not, it's not really the downtown dwellers as much as it is the visitors that we would hope to be making attractive.
But how do you stop the downtown dwellers?
Oh, there, there's gonna be some residents using it too, there would be if you had a fixed route operation.
Very executive producerism.
Um, Uber, the taxi drivers never want to drive you to a close spot, because we live close to downtown, so wherever we're at Fremont, we take a taxi home, they never want to drive us. I think, yes, because it's too short, so I, we have to go like to third taxi in line just to get a taxi, and uh, but.
We're responsible, we don't partake in alcoholic beverages and drive homes.
And then we, we don't walk too much, because I fall every time. It's spraying my ankle, but anyway. Okay, my point is, my point is, I don't think, I think that, I don't think that that would be for tourists, the Uber thing, because I think that they would be overwhelmed with the locals using it, that's what I think, on that. You know what I mean?
And I have to add to that, because otherwise I would not be called Orlando. Uh, the taxi company don't want to go anywhere with the locals. They just want to stay in this street.
Yes.
Because I have called from my house to get a taxi, and I tell you, I get a limo faster than I get a taxi.
We've always had two worlds here, there's the world of us who live here and the world of us who visit here.
Yeah.
We like them both.
Yes, we love both, because I tell you, without the people that visit, we would be nothing.
Yeah.
You know, and uh, but uh, tell me, what is the area of World Two?
Uh, I'm kind of the western suburbs, so um, I'm out around uh, Tivoli and Queens Ridge and um, uh, North Summerlin, basically. Lake Mead is my northern boundary, uh, my southern boundary is, eh, Sahara-ish.
Oh, really?
Uh, and then uh, my eastern boundary is Buffalo-ish and the west goes all the way out to where you, where it's too steep.
So, this is not uh.
So, no, I'm not in the downtown area, but I think all of us.
I don't know it.
Well, all six members though, I think, feel a kinship and an obligation to downtown. It's, downtowns are always special places and we want it to do well, and so, we all think about uh, downtown. I think that's true.
No, uh, but uh, it doesn't do you any good to have a sign here saying.
Oh, no.
It doesn't do you good to waste a sign over here or in East Bay.
Yeah.
Because uh, like we got.
Yeah, no, you all see to me, my sign's downtown, it's all west of Buffalo.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, west of Buffalo.
West of Buffalo, yeah, so.
What do you mean, what, oh, yeah, yeah, just.
It's way out there, it's way out there.
There's a couple of things I want to talk about, uh, you have excellent director producer over there, but they gave me a, a little information. In two thousand and six, you were awarded a taxpayer hero award from the American Tax Report. Is that fair? And then, yeah, something like that. Okay, you wanna talk about that either?
Yeah, that was, probably goes back to two thousand and three, uh, when we had a legislative session that at the time was the largest tax hike that had been proposed for state government. And uh, I emerged as a leader because of my CPA license and my financial literacy and my mastery of tools that allow you to take a big chunk of data like a budget proposal and be able to sort and filtering them to pieces that make sense. And uh, I convinced enough of my caucus members that this would not be a very good idea and eventually we lost, you know, dramatic, a couple of special sessions, they, they amended the education budget out of the budget and then amended it into the tax package, and they brought that over and over. So, if you voted against the taxes, they were voting against the children, which was kind of deposterous, but it was. And that was back in oh three, and I think it took Americans for taxpayer reform a couple of years to, you know, lay the reports or something.
Um, let me.
You know what, that might have been the year I ran for governor.
Oh, wow.
Uh, yeah, I ran for governor on the dessert first ticket and I lost.
Oh, wow. Who do you think is the rock for governors like this?
That's a good question, I think uh, looks to me like the field is narrowing to Adam Laxall on the Republican side and Steve Sisolite on the Democrat side, that's how I'm seeing it, but my, my crystal ball gets foggy or foggy or foggy until the election results are counted.
Yeah.
And then suddenly, it's clear.
Now, what I said when you came in, it was uh, being as a joke, but now that you are explaining all this talk about the city and how you guys and together working to better the city of Las Vegas, I'd like to ask you again, who did you piss off to get three people running against you? Why don't these people don't run against Bob Coffin or, or Rick, Rick, whatever his name is?
This has to do with Badlands Golf Course and the Queens Ridge community, there are people who live on the Badlands Golf Course, which closed November thirty, that want the city to buy the golf course and save their view. Uh, I, I heard their plan and pronounced it, I couldn't support it, because it would cost all the other taxpayers in the city money in order to save their view, and they all initialed disclosure in their purchase agreement that the golf course would go away someday. Some of them are so mad and so rich that they were able to uh, advertise for a candidate and they recruited a candidate and.
They advertised for a candidate?
They were on another radio program, KNPR, uh, twice.
Oh, well.
If somebody runs, we'll offer them full funding.
Are, are they gonna do it?
I don't know.
Because I know a lady, I know a lady that was gonna run for Congress and uh, somebody said, foul, then I'm gonna support you, and she never saw that uh, that help whatsoever.
That uh, is a well-known phenomenon in politics where promises get made and broken.
Well, remember when Judge uh, ah, I just remember that Mexican judge, uh, Don Chares.
Yeah.
He was gonna run, people were pissed at her because the ruling on the papacy.
Yeah.
Steve Wynn didn't get pissed. As a matter of fact, Steve Wynn called him to his office and said, run for Congress, then I'm gonna support you and I'm gonna finance you completely. And after he stepped down from the bench and he filed for Congress, he was never able to get in touch with Steve Wynn again.
Yeah, it, this is, um, this, politics is an interesting thing. I'm, I do it because I'm comfortable that I have marketable skills. Uh, and if the voters do call me home, I'll be able to make a living. It's great comfort to approach this job with that perspective to me. Um, and, and so I don't, uh, ever look to one individual to heavily finance a campaign. My campaigns tend to be financed by just regular people, uh, and I'm proud of that. I have, I go back through campaign finance reports, they're a little dry, but, uh, uh, you'll see that I have a high percentage of, uh, of under a hundred dollar contributors, which are just regular folks.
That's right, and I tell you one thing, one thing that I seen in you is, even before I ever met you, I make the phone call to you and you answer the phone. And you didn't even know who I was.
I do.
Because I'm just a migrant, poor, human refugee and nobody.
Who's been here for fifty years.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, my mom told me a million times not to exaggerate, so I try. Narrowly said, but, uh, yeah, that, that, uh, is something I take very seriously is, is, uh, being accessible. Uh, in fact, if you Google my name, my cell number comes up, but you don't even have to do that, it's seven oh-two, five-nine-two, eight-eight-two-two. And I do answer it.
Wow, does you?
Call people back, I'm.
Does you, oh, does your cell?
It's my cell.
You don't have two cells like Michael, like Tom?
Yeah, you not have two cells.
Let me give you my cellphone so you can call me directly, and he never answered the phone.
One for each year?
Yeah, no, he don't answer the other one. He got, he got one phone for his wife and the rest is for the.
Yeah, it's, it is really the flash job of very, Orlando, I, I just really is.
Do you see any difference with Metro under the new administration now than the Calais?
Yeah, I do, uh.
For the best or for the worst?
Well.
I wanna ask you that.
You know, police department's a complex thing, but I think that the prior sheriff had interpreted the sales tax increase in such a manner that if the proceeds reached a certain level in the bank that would finance a typical career earning, then he hires someone. And as a result, they, they had a large surplus of cash. Now the new sheriff has come in and run several academies, I think by the end of this year, we're gonna end up with, uh, three hundred and fifty new officers around the street.
Let me ask you something, and I don't know if that make any sense, asking that question now, but, you know, the city of Las Vegas ever thought about going back to be an independent city and have their own police department and, like, we used to be, like, Henderson, like, Bogota City, like, Mississippi.
My understanding of the history is that in the early seventies, the legislature passed a law allowing, or directing all local governments in Southern Nevada, uh, to join their police departments together. But then there's a provision that any one of those local governments could withdraw and not consolidate. And in the end, everyone did not consolidate except for the city and what was the county sheriff. So today, uh, you're right, there's Las Vegas and county, and then the others have their own police department. It would take a legislative action to look at something like that, and I haven't looked at it, I can't, I don't know what it would look like and how it would work. I guess we're gonna see a, uh, maybe a sample of that with the school district deconsolidation.
Right.
Couple of years, see how that goes. So, the answer is, the city couldn't think about it, it'd really be the legislature thinking about it, and I haven't heard any such discussion.
Uh, she knows, okay, now, Bob.
I did wind up, I can see it over there, jumping up and down.
I want to tell you, I appreciate you taking the time to come right here. I want you to know the Las Vegas Tribune, and this show on Radio Tribune is backing you all the way.
That's my first endorsement.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
I believe that you're doing the right thing, I believe that you are a full-time city council. I believe that you believe in helping the city, no matter what word is the problem. And I, I want you to know that anything we can do here, and I'm, people that know me know that I don't bullshit anybody. I'm telling you from the bottom of my heart, anything we can do from here to help you.
That's right.
Because I don't believe that people should be running for office just because they don't like one thing or another thing. If they cannot think about the city as a whole, they should know. No.
Anything?
Nothing.
Your executive producer would like you to stop talking now.
Thank you.
Your hours are.
Thank you so much.
That's why I call Phil on the phone, that's why I call Phil on the phone.
Thank you so much for listening to Face the Tribute, and once again, you can Google us and we'll be up on YouTube at the notch in a couple of hours. And we were sitting here watching the legendary Ramon Melrose face the tribute, our good friend Bob Beers running out of War Two, vote for him, he's a good man, and we say that all the time when we talk about politics on the show. He has our endorsement, Las Vegas Tribune, Face the Tribune, and Chris Garcia, Conservative American. Vote for Bob Beers, am I right, Orlando?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely, vote for Bob Beers, thank you for watching, and once again, we'll see you.